Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business is roll call, which is done electronically, and I will declare a quorum present with Mr. Mullen absent. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is followed by a moment of silent reflection. Please rise.
(inaudible)
Next on our agenda is public hearings, and we will start with the 2026 budget hearing. This is your opportunity to speak to the budget. You did not have to sign up in advance to speak on the budget, but I will start with anyone who did. Please note that if you signed up to speak during public comment on an agenda item not regarding the budget, that is later on on our agenda, so I will get to you in a little bit. But we'll start with Dusty Crickow for the public hearing.
Thank you, Tiffany. As some of you know, I serve as the president of the Fond du Lac Public Library Board of Directors, and I wanted to draw attention to an item on the budgets particularly related to the library, the library funding line. So federal funding for libraries is threatened currently. So despite court orders in March, in as of August, the administration, the federal administration was working to eliminate the Institute for Museum and Library Science. These federal funds make up 30% to 50% of most state library budgets, and in Wisconsin, that amounts to $3.2 million last year. Our library has consistently operated conservatively, ultimately building a healthy reserve of $367,000 at the end of 2024. We know that staffing increases are coming next year, as they should come, along with the cost of living increases that we've all seen, and that means that in the current budget, our reserve will be nearly halved, which we understand has to happen sometimes. However, in the current situation, our current budget proposal doesn't include any start -- the budget coming from the city does not include any state, any standard cost of living increases. And with our federal funding being as insecure as it currently is, and subsequently therefore our state funding being as insecure as it is, and knowing that a cost for the library's operation can only go up like everything does, I'm concerned that we are setting a precedent that includes when we create a budget with no library funding increases at all. As we look at such an uncertain funding environment in the coming year, I would urge you to please consider increasing the budget for the library, at least to match cost of living increases, even just a nominal increase. I think, starting with a 0% increase, that's a dangerous precedent for future city councils who may not have the history to recognize that this is an exception to a normal increase that the library would be getting. So that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. We did not have anybody else who signed up in advance to speak during the public hearing, but is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2026 budget? I'll ask another time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2026 budget? And for a third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2026 budget? Seeing none, I will just ask council, do you have any questions at this time on the 2026 budget? I am not seeing any, so we will close. Oh, sorry, Mr. Moore, would you like to?
I thought since we had the time and Dusty was here, and I know you're on the board too, Ms. Brought, to address her, because she described it accurately, up and down the line. So what I, what I hope to do is confer with the new library director, once that person is here, if they're not here already, and get their, give them an opportunity to see their budget, to study their budget, to talk with the library board, and then revisit this the first quarter or so next year, sort of after the dust settles on the transition for the new director, and then go from there. I think we're in good shape right now. I don't think we have anything pressing, but I did want to address that and confirm that what she said is all accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, seeing no other questions from council, I will declare the public hearing on the 2026 budget closed. So next, we have the 2026 transit budget. So is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2026 transit budget? For a second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2026 transit budget? And for a third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2026 transit budget? Seeing no one, I will just check with council, is there anyone who has questions on the 2026 transit budget? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Brought. I wanted to take just a minute and give Paul De Vries the opportunity to introduce a superstar that you may not have met, but she's been promoted through the ranks and has come upon us as the new transit manager. So with that, Paul, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just want to take a minute or two, as long as we're on the transit, to introduce our new transit manager, Nicole Drayer, sitting right over there. If you recognize the name or her, she did come to us from controllers, and I don't think I've ever made Tricia mad before, but I think I did, in stealing her away. She was a senior accountant, and she's been growing in her career since coming out of the city over nine years ago, and we see a lot of talent there, and she's really eager to get going, and the new role as transit manager is going to be a nice growth step for her. And I know she'll do great, and we're excited to have her on board and in that position. So feel free to reach out to her with any transit-related things, or just to say hi and welcome to, to the team. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words at all? You don't have to, but since you're here.
I wasn't really prepared to, but I'm just, I'm really excited to, for the new opportunity with transit, and just the beginning of week four for me out here, so I'm getting all settled in, but I'm really excited.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for joining us today, and welcome.
I told you I'm new.
Oh.
Sorry.[465.12][465.12](laughter)
Next time. Well, thank you so much for being here, and welcome, and we're so excited, sorry to Tricia, but it's wonderful to see someone move up and that knows the community, and so we're really excited to have you. Thank you. All right, well, with that, I will declare the 2026 tran, the public hearing on the 2026 transit budget closed. So next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting, A, October 8th, 2025 regular council meeting minutes, and B, list of claims dated October 15th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Godfrey, second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is audience comments, agenda and non-agenda items. The presiding officer will limit speaking time for non-agenda items to one minute and items noticed on the agenda to five minutes. Ms. Mann, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We do.
We do have several, so if you could please step up to the podium when I call your name, we will start with Zach Rogers, who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 5C, Ordinance Number 389, or 3819.
All right, hello, everyone. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm here just to speak about 5C, which is the rezoning of, rezoning of the two house lots to industrial, so that Milk Specialty Products can change them into a parking lot. Yeah, that's just what I want to address. So yeah, just in general, I'm not favor an expansion, I'm not in favor for expansion of the milk, or I'm not in favor of expansion of those facilities, just for two primary issues. There's a couple, I have a, some, there's some current problems with the facility and the nature of the facility's future expansion. Just let me list off the first five main current problems. Main issue with the facility is that there are every so often, and it has to be an evacuation for like a chemical leak or something. I haven't gotten back from my records request, but that's for later. With the facility growing, that would be all the more pertinent. Second issue is that the machinery is, you know, generally constantly on and loud, even at night, measured about 55 decibels from two streets away, with some variance higher and lower over the, over one of the nights. Makes it difficult to leave windows open on nice nights while getting any sleep. Third is, there's an odor, a sort of sour ammonia smell that shows up every so often. It's disruptive, blocks outdoor activities. Fourth is, there's like an ash or something, sometimes turns to do white, isn't a large problem itself, but it does speak more so to a concern of what's being put in the air. And then fifth is that there's constant semis going into the facility and going down Hickory into the facility, sometimes getting blocked up, backing up traffic. Most of them are minor concerns. My major concern is just with the evacuations. And with these current issues caused by the facilities just on the north side of Tompkins, personally, as someone who lives on Ninth, two streets over, I don't want to see further industrial expansion, causing an increase in those already existing issues. If they're this sizable of effects two streets away, I don't want to suffer them right next door. I know it has gotten, the rezoning's gotten, or the rezoning and the comprehensive plan for the future has gotten reduced somewhat since, from what the planning committee was. I just want to bring up my issues here. Current rezoning proposal is not acting to resolve any of those previous issues I covered, rather, a sixth issue, which is insufficient employee parking. And while that employee parking issue may be resolved with an expanded parking lot over the two housing zones, it's not going to address any of the existent noise, odor, ash, or traffic situations. Although, the evacuations are, again, the primary point to take umbrage with, primarily because with the business bounded on the north by the river, east by the railroad, and west by Hickory Street, it would thus expand southwards into the residential areas on Grove and Ninth. Main primary concern with that is, while the rezoning to manufacturing would allow a parking lot, it would also allow any other facilities to be built there. It's not limited to a parking lot if it's manufacturing zoning, to the best of my knowledge. And mainly, I just don't want additional area closer or deeper into residential areas that could support a facility, that could have like a, cause an evacuation of any form. Just don't want something dangerous nearer to me than they already are. Yes, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next, we have Marie Romo, who also wishes to speak on Item 5C.
My grandson lives on that street with my daughter and her husband, and when I go down there, all I see is semis on both sides of the road, and it is very dangerous. I worry about my grandson, even though he's responsible, but I still worry that these truck drivers might not see him. And another thing is, I'm worried about every time there's a fire over there, the ambulance and fire trucks are called, and this is early in the morning. One day, I thought my daughter's house and my grandson were on, the house was on fire. Here, it was the plant across the street once again, and the fire department parked into my daughter's driveway, and I thought it was my daughter's house, and here it was across the street again. And I'm really concerned about that. I'm concerned about the chemical smell for my grandson, and for the houses that are close by this company, I read online that they're going to have a wastewater treatment in the next five years. That's their plan. So my question is, are they going to wait to build this wastewater plant first, and then have these people move out? Or are they going to buy these houses on Tompkins before all this stuff happens? So I'm very concerned about the truckers on both sides. The traffic is terrible, and I was just wondering if there's something else that can be done. Could they buy the houses sooner? Because the way it sounds, in the next five years, they want to make a wastewater treatment, and the odor is going to be worse than it is now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Marie Kelly, who also wishes to speak on Item 5C.
I'm going to start off by saying that I live across the street from the company. I bought the house in 2009, thinking that it was going to be my forever home, one that I would raise my kids in, grow old in. I have lived there the past 16 years. When I moved into the house, there was nothing across the street but an empty building. Before that, it was saputo, but there was nothing across the street besides grass. Then this company moved in across the street, and it has been nothing but problems. The smell prevents us from opening our windows, taking the kids outside, and dogs to play, which the kids suffer, because we have a trampoline, swing set, bikes, everything, and we're stuck in the house because no one wants to smell that. There are many times when we have to evacuate our house and not being told what's going on. So we pack up our dogs, pack up the kids, take them to wherever we have to go, not being told what's going on. The only way we figure out what's going on is by Facebook updates, reading about what people are saying around the area. We also have the employees parked right in front of our house, which is covering up some of our driveway sometimes, so it makes us very hard to try to get out of our driveway because of the fact that they are parked in some of our spot. Then there are times when our street is full of semis, sometimes even the silos. I understand the semi drivers have a job to do. I mean, I have family members who drive semis for this, the company that picks up from there. The semis block my driveway. We have to fight with the drivers sometimes, who are not very nice. There was one time when a semi driver was parked in front of our driveway. We beeped our horn, and the semi driver got out of the vehicle and told us to move along, and we were trying to tell him that that was our driveway we were trying to get into. At that point, he moved in just a little bit, or moved up just a little bit, so we can get our vehicle through the driveway, but not enough for us to safely just pull in. Also, there are days that the company will bring down huge silos down the street, and of course, I understand they all have jobs to do, we all have jobs to do, but our driveway was blocked off, my son was almost late for school because of this, and I called the company numerous times to complain that, just let us know what's going on, so that way we can plan accordingly, get my son to school, park down the street, whatever. They have never taken us seriously on that. Also, let's see. The other day, we actually got a letter in the mailbox, because I did bring this up at the last meeting last week, that they're going to be coming on the 27th, on Monday, they're going to be bringing a crane down. So I mean, this is something that I wanted in the beginning, so that way we can plan accordingly, but they have been here for how long, and now they are doing something about it. And, let's see, I'm just a very frustrated neighbor to Actus or Milk Specialty, whatever we want to call it, because they could have built this company outside of Fond du Lac, not in the middle of a town. Because now, where people are trying to live, relax, raise a family, some might sit there and think this is a joke, smirk, roll their eyes, but these are people's lives. These are where people are trying to raise their family. So put your shoe, or put yourself in my shoes, I'm pretty sure you'd be frustrated, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kenneth Kane, who also wishes to speak on Item 5C.
My name is Kenneth Kane, and I'm here with my wife, Elizabeth. We live at 3, 4, 5 Grove Street, and we've been here to these meetings a bunch of times. The reason that we keep coming here is because our property is contiguous to the properties in question. And through all of these meetings, through the bloviating, the hyperbole, the innuendos and that, one thing comes through, and that is parking. Now, there's a problem with parking, I get it. This company says that they have a solution. It can't be any simpler than that. There's a problem, there's a solution. If you allow this company to, to rezone, then, in my opinion, the problem goes away. Not all the problems, but the problem with parking goes away. Now, the house next door to us is vacant. Normally, if there's a family that lives there, there's a car or two that comes and goes periodically. If you allow this company to rezone, we're going to have cars that are going to come and go all day and all night, and we're good with that. There's not a problem. And so we would be the, probably the only people that are going to be, how do you say, affected the most by this company. So my question tonight is that there's a problem, and are you going to continue to let this problem happen, or are you going to be part of the solution and let them? All they want to do is, is to put a parking lot in. We're not talking about smell, we're not talking about flakes, we're not talking about anything. We live there, too. We smell the cheese, you know? I mean, we get it, you know? But it's a, it's a company, it's a factory. The only question here tonight is, are you going to allow them to put parking in? That's it. I hope that you do that.
Thank you. And then we also had two individuals who wanted to say that they are opposed to Item 5C, but do not wish to speak. We have Bonnie Percy and Deborah Rogers. And with that, that is all we have signed up for public comment, so that ends our public, public comment period, and we will move on, I mean, our audience comments, we will move on to our action items. Action Item A is Resolution Number 9206, a resolution canceling the city council meeting for November 25th, 2025, with our introduction by our city manager, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I put this on the agenda because I want to recommend to you to cancel that meeting. I don't think we need it. We've had a very productive last many meetings. Tonight's public hearing gets us ready for the budget and CIP approval at the next meeting. This meeting is a meeting that, when we have it, we put it on a Tuesday night, because it's the week of Thanksgiving, so that's, that's the rationale behind it, is recommending its cancellation for those reasons.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Moore? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Mr. Heisler, second by Mr. Godfrey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item B is Ordinance Number 3818, an ordinance amending the City of Fond du Lac 2040 Comprehensive Plan, with our introduction by our Community Development Director, Ms. Benson.
Thank you, Ms. Brought. As you're aware, because we've had this conversation many times, how does the city govern development? There must be two aspects to it: land use and zoning. The two must match. So here, we're talking about land use, which is the underlying basis for how we determine what zoning will be in place. So in our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in January 21, we identified this area's land use as residential. When the applicant, Atkiss Nutrition, requested a rezoning of the two parcels at 341 and 335, they had to request an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, because the underlying land use for residential does not support the ultimate zoning of manufacturing. So when the Plan Commission considered the Comprehensive Plan Amendment at their meeting, the public hearing listed a significant number of properties, basically the entire neighborhood from Hickory to the railroad. And that was because the Board of Appeals determined that if we're going to have a conversation about amending the Comprehensive Plan, let's have a conversation about what the long-term vision potentially could be for Atkiss Nutrition. And at that time, they had envisioned potential growth to encompass that entire neighborhood. At the Plan Commission meeting, the Plan Commission had a healthy discussion about land use, and about the plans that Atkiss Nutrition may or may not have, but also heard the significant concerns expressed by the residents in attendance. And so at that point, they do not recommend the Comprehensive Plan as presented in that public hearing notice, which included, you know, a significant number of properties. But they did recommend a Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the land use for the two parcels at 341 and 335, because again, they did hear the concerns of the neighbors, and they did feel that the expansion of the parking would help alleviate some of the concerns. Not all of the concerns, but that is why. And so the message was sent to the applicant that while they can always come back and request another Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that this Plan Commission did not support any expansion of an industrial land use into a residential neighborhood, that basically this additional land use change was their last opportunity to change the land use as identified in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So thus, the Plan Commission recommends a Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 6 to include a conversion of land use from residential to industrial, only for those two parcels, 335 and 341 Grove Street.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Benson? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey? Second by Mr. Schisler? Is there any discussion? Mr. Heisler?
I apologize, and I should have asked this one. You said, "Are there any questions for Ms. Benson?", because now I have one. I'm just curious, with, with the way the ordinance is written here, the ordinance as written here is specific to the two parcels you previously discussed, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So the ordinance as here is, is not the larger discussion that the Plan Commission had? It's been drilled down since then?
It is, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification as well. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to Item C, Ordinance Number 3819, an ordinance rezoning 335 Grove Street, FDL 1517152355600, and 341 Grove Street, FDL 1517152355700, from R1 Single Family Residential District to M1 Manufacturing District. Again, our introduction is by our Community Development Director, Ms. Benson.
Thank you, Ms. Brought. So we just changed the land use of two parcels within the city from residential to industrial. And now, as we previously discussed, so land use and zoning, they have to align. And so now, we need to change the zoning to the manufacturing to reflect the land use that was just approved. And so the rezoning would convert the zoning just for those two parcels, 341 and 335, to M1 Manufacturing. And so it would allow for the expansion of that parking area to the east. I would like to address one comment that was shared by a member of the public, that while, yes, M1 zoning and the recommendation by the Plan Commission for the rezoning for those two parcels does allow for the overall M1 zoning, but one needs to keep in mind that these are two residential parcels. While N1 has a number of different permitted uses, we need to keep in mind that in addition to uses, the city also regulates bulk requirements, or what you might think of as setbacks. So any other development needs to be set back so far in an M1 district from certain property lines. So basically, while the M1 zoning does allow for a broader development per se, in actuality, the size of the parcel itself is going to limit the ability to comply with the zoning code for any additional development other than a parking lot. code for any additional development other than a parking lot.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Benson on this ordinance? Mr. Schisler.
I saw in their application, they mentioned the potential water sewage treatment plant in their company's application.
Okay.
So, does our approving a rezoning tonight open the door in any way, shape, or form?
Not for that particular location, no. If they wanted to do it at their main plant facility, that would be, you know, a typical process, but it would not be something that would be allowed at the 335 and 341.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Ms. Brought. Ms. Benson, please bear with me. There's going to be a question somewhere in this. I just don't know how I'm getting there yet, so. So, I grew up over on Grove Street, so I know exactly what a lot of these people are talking about, and I see both sides of this. I think the parking lot's a good idea. It's going to relieve some parking on the street. But there is an issue on that side of Grove because it's very narrow. And when you get semis down there and you got people parking on both sides of that road, it's very difficult. So, on top of what we're doing, I mean, go ahead. I can see you're spinning already.
So, I would take it care of it. The intended parking is parking for employees, not for semis.
Right. But they're still going to be all traveling down Grove Street to get the parking.
Certainly. And that's a separate conversation that we'll be having with Milk Specialties regarding how they manage their semi truck traffic. We've had that conversation with engineering, so we'll be following up with them.
That will get addressed, then.
We'll be having some conversations.
Okay. And I'm okay with this. All right. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from council? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey, second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. That ends our action items, so we will move on to our presentation of input items. Item A is Water Supply Service Area Plan, presented by Travis Kletzky, Water Works' General Manager, and Steve Klesner? Klesner, sorry about that. I meant to ask you before the meeting, who is from Strand Associates. All right, welcome. Oh. Sorry. I think you. Just getting the right mics.
Good evening. I just wanted to, a short little introduction. This is Steve Klesner with Strand and Associates. He is responsible for putting together the Water Service Supply Area Plan, otherwise known as WSSAP, if you want that. One item of note on my memo that I included in the agenda item, I mentioned the full report can be seen on our webpage. We haven't gotten to that. For some reason, we're having some technical difficulties getting it on there, but we will work to get it on there for people to view. So, with that, Steve Klesner's been working with the city for, since I've been here, 2015. I think they started in 2011?
2007.
Oh, sorry, 2007. Steve has been predominantly the engineer that we work with, with a lot of projects. So, with that, Steve can take it away with the plan result.
Perfect. Thank you, Travis, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about the Water Supply Service Area Plan for the Fond du Lac Water Works. Going to the next slide, yep. So, the NRA 854 Water Supply Service Area Plan, so the purpose of that plan, the purpose of NRA 854 is to establish procedures and requirements for public water supply systems to follow to help ensure systems can provide adequate, excuse me, capacity and supply of water to their customers. NRA 854 applies to public water systems serving a population of 10,000 or more and that operate their own wells or surface water intakes, which the City of Fond du Lac does have their own wells and over 10,000 population. The Water Supply Service Area Plans only need to be submitted to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources when an additional withdrawal from the Great Lakes Basin requires a new or an increased water use permit. So, while this plan needs to be completed, it doesn't need to be submitted, and in fact, the current withdrawal permit that the City of Fond du Lac has is over 14 million gallons per day. And as you can see, as you will see, as we get through the presentation, right now, water demands aren't anywhere close to that. So, I don't see this needing to be submitted anytime soon, but it does need to be completed, and it does need to be completed by the end of this year. So, key elements to include in the Water Supply Service Area Plan include information about the existing water sources, population projections, and future water demands, inventory of sources and quantities of the current water supply in the area, identification of water supply options, and then a delineation of the area to which public water system may provide water in the future. And then, if there are recommendations that come out of this plan, what is the assessment of the environmental impacts for carrying out those recommendations? This plan also should align with existing comprehensive plans or other wastewater facility plans as well. And then, finally, this plan needs to provide an opportunity for the public to provide comment, and that's kind of what we're presenting here today. So, just to give you a little information on the water system, here's a water system schematic that displays flow of water through the system. So, there are three zones, Zone 1, 2, and 3. Zone 1 is the main zone where all of the well supply is located. Water is then pumped from the main zone into Zone 2, which is at a higher hydraulic gradient. And then, water then is also pumped from Zone 1 or Zone 2 into Zone 3, or Zone 1 into Zone 3, which is even a higher hydraulic gradient. And so, you can see, there's a lot of facilities here, a lot of source of supplies that are involved in this water system. We can bring on challenges to operations, but you're in good position with your water system supply and storage capacities. So, here's a table, a few tables showing this existing supply and storage for the community. Your well capacity has a total capacity of over 9,000 gallons per minute with a firm capacity of over 7,000 gallons per minute. Your storage capacity is total almost 10 million gallons, which is approximately two average days' worth of storage in your system. And one thing to note, right now, your wells are located in two separate wellfields, the North Well Field and the South Well Field. And the North Well Field aquifer capacity has been evaluated in previous studies, and it shows that it has a capacity of about four to five million gallons per day. The South Well Field aquifer has a capacity of about two to three million gallons per day, which, if you total this up, eight million gallons per day on the high side, which is only about 5,600 gallons per minute. So, as you can see, you have more well capacity than you have aquifer capacity. And that is, the reason for that is, is so that you can supply water on the maximum days, you know, that only happened during certain periods of the year, but average day demands need to be within your aquifer capacity, and we'll get to that here on our next future slides. So, existing and future service areas are required to be identified as part of the Water Supply Service Area Plan. So, future service areas and development through the year 2035 have been identified in previous reports. As shown here, there are some residential, commercial, and industrial future developments shown, and they're all within a future planning service area. Now, this service area is not meant to be set in stone. It's not meant that you have to follow it. It's just the Water Supply Service Area Plan has to show that you are thinking about where your water service will eventually be serving. Looking a little bit at your sales for water, per capita sales by category are shown on this figure. Since the year 2015, per capita sales have been relatively stable, with a little bump up in the year 2023, but overall, per capita sales categories have been stable, and that's a good indication of good conservation practices that have been maintained through the last 10 years and will hopefully continue to provide stable per capita sales in the future, which will allow for easier supplying of your demands. One other important thing that I wanted to point out that isn't directly related to the Water Supply Service Area Plan, but I think is a good success story, is the improvements with leak detection and reporting result in an increased sales to pumpage ratio, and that's an important thing when it comes to what amount of water you need to actually pump out of the ground. So, since the year 2015, there's been a pretty good steady increase in the sales to pumpage ratio. So, while population may increase, as long as your per capita sales remain stable and your sales to pumpage ratio remains high, your overall pumpage is not going to be changing much, and that's been the case for the last 10 years, where the overall pumpage has remained relatively stable. Now, looking at population projections. Population projections result in high and low demand projections. So, here's a figure that shows the census data. It shows some previous DOA estimates between the years 2010 and 2020. And then, it shows current WDOA estimates in the green triangles, which are showing a fairly significant decrease in population over the next 20 years, or next 15 years. And then, there's some Comprehensive Plan population projections that have been shown here that show a relatively low-growth pattern, but at least some growth through the year 2035. And what this does is it allows us to look at both high and low water demand projections, and in this case of this study, we're looking at more of the higher growth as it aligns better with the Comprehensive Plan, and it also will allow you to understand what it looks, what your source supply looks like under a high-growth projection. So, current and future growth demand projections provide conservative planning. So, the table shows average day, maximum day, and peak hour demands for the design years of 2025, 2030, and 2035. As you can see from the table, average day demands are between 4.6 to 4.9 million gallons per day for the next 10 years per year. Maximum day demands are a little over 8 million gallons per day. As we previously discussed, the firm well capacity to meet maximum day demands is approximately 10 and 1/2 million gallons per day, where your maximum day demand is only 8 and 1/2 in the future, million gallons per day. So, there is a reserve of well capacity for meeting maximum day demands. The average day demands are about 4.8, and we talked previously that your aquifer capacity is somewhere between 6 and 8 MGDs. So, your aquifer capacity is greater than your average day demand, which means you have adequate aquifer supply over the planning period. However, there is some stress that is created on the aquifer during those maximum day periods of pumping, which does cause for some challenging operations for the water utility staff to maintain appropriate water levels in their wells, and they have to work on balancing between the wellfields significantly more during those maximum day periods because you're getting close to the aquifer capacity. The capacity analysis also identifies a surplus in supply. The figure on the left shows the water use throughout a typical day in the City of Fond du Lac. The magenta line is the maximum day demand. The green line is your firm well capacity. And then, everything that is above the firm capacity well line for demands needs to come out of storage to meet the domestic demand. In addition to that amount of storage coming out, amount of water coming out of storage, there is a fire demand that has been established in the city that also needs to be applied to the calculation to identify that you have adequate storage, not only for your domestic use, but also for your fire protection. And so, plugging this information into our calculation actually comes out to show that there is approximately 3 and 1/2 million gallons of storage reserve in the City of Fond du Lac through the planning period of 2035. So, water source alternatives. The Water Supply Service Area Plan just wants you to look at the different options that are available to the City of Fond du Lac for water source. So, there are three main options that are available to the city, which include deep wells, shallow wells, and then, surface water. So, right now, all of your source is coming from deep wells in the existing North Well Field. We talked about the aquifer capacity being four to five MGD, the South Well Field, two to three MGD. And then, there have been previous studies that have looked at a future east-side well field, and it's been projected in those studies that there's a potential capacity of three to six million gallons per day from that aquifer if needed in the future. Shallow wells have generally not been a good option for the City of Fond du Lac. The shallow aquifer does not provide enough capacity to meet your water demand needs, and so, the deeper wells would provide better capacity. Please keep in mind, right now, you have 17 deep wells, and so, if you had shallow wells, you'd have significantly more wells that would have to be maintained and operated, which can bring on some added costs. The third option I talked about was surface water, more specifically, Lake Winnebago. Lake Winnebago could certainly be a reliable source of supply. It would require a higher level of treatment. It can be challenging and expensive to implement and operate, but this has been studied in the past, and it certainly is a viable option. But overall, based off of your current aquifer capacity, your current demands, existing deep groundwater sources are currently your best alternative at this time. However, as water demands approach existing well field aquifer capacity, these additional source alternatives will need to be looked at, but that is beyond the planning period of 2035. So, in summary, there is a well supply surplus of approximately 1,400 gallons per minute in year 2035. There's a water storage surplus of approximately 3.6 million gallons in the year 2035. Continued well maintenance has resulted in extended service life for your existing well supply. Some of you may not know, but you have a few wells that are approaching the century mark, which is a very strong age for a well, and it can be commended to the water utility for their proactive maintenance. The existing wellfield's aquifer capacities are 6 to 8 million gallons per day, and as we previously just mentioned, no significant changes to source water anticipated through the year 2035, and consideration of water supply options will be needed when yearly supply pumpage approaches existing well field aquifer capacity. And the main two options would be the future east well field and Lake Winnebago. And then, the final note I wanted to make here, so this Water Supply Service Area Plan does have some specific requirements to it that mostly look at supply. And so, it doesn't look at a lot of the other water system components, the facilities, the distribution system, and so, this doesn't really take place of a detailed water system plan. And a more detailed water system plan will be prepared in the future so that better understanding of operational and maintenance needs and capital improvement projects can occur. But this will be utilized and need to be updated at the end of the planning period to meet the NRA 854 requirements. And that is the summary of this presentation, and we're happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the very informative presentation. Are there any questions or comments from council? We will start with Mr. Schisler.
Thank you. Is there a way that you could, for someone who has no background in this, describe the strength of the aquifers or the history? Like, it looks like everything's cool now, but I mean, is it, like, oil fields are good one year, and then they're gone the next? So, just wondering how stable that underground rivers, those underground rivers are.
Well, that is a great question, and similarly to the oil fields, anything below ground is still somewhat of a mystery. So, there are, have been several studies completed that looked at both the existing aquifers that you have and a future east-side aquifer. And there's a wide variety in the amount of capacity that's been. And there's a wide variety in the amount of capacity that's been identified. There have been some reports that have projected the capacity to be above 10 million gallons per day between the two aquifers. There's been ones that have been closer to eight million gallons per day. And what Travis continues to work on and what we try to assist with is being able to understand how the water levels in their existing wells are reacting to the amount of pumpage that is occurring. And so understanding how that pumping water levels decrease or stabilize is a great indicator of understanding if you're at your aquifer capacity or not. So for example, the north well field is significantly older in age than the south well field. And so the north well field went through a lot of its significant decrease in water levels many, many years ago, and has since become to a stabilized standpoint that has been fairly stable for many years. The south well field is much newer, and it's still in its, I'll say, declining point with its pumping water levels. And so does that mean that it's being slightly overstressed and overpumped a little bit, and that the capacity is a little bit lower on the lower end of the range? That's a possibility, and, and Travis is going to continue to work to gather that information so that we can fine tune what those numbers look like. But overall, the aquifer capacity for the planning period and even beyond this planning period looks relatively stable enough for adequate source of supply into the future.
What, what type of threats are out there that change what you normally would expect to have happen?
Drought would be the number one. Even in just a single drought year, it can bring on some significant challenges to the water utility on balancing the well fields out and maintaining pumping water levels that work with their pump setting depths, for example. So it would bring on some, some challenges. I think the challenges can certainly be met, it's just the, understanding the system a little bit better and understanding how you can operates wells in the different well fields to, to make sure that we're, we're staying in those, those ranges of water levels that we want. But, but drought would be your number one concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leering.
I just have a question about the supply and the demand. Has, I don't know the history of our system, so have we always had the supply to meet the demand, or have there been times when it's, it hasn't, like, it's gotten closed?
So the city of Fond du Lac, you know, in the history, has had some higher, much higher demands for water than they do currently. That's just from some industrial changes, the way industries use water, you know, those types of things. So the city of Fond du Lac's always had a high level of, of supply wells compared to demand. Several years ago, a proactive approach was put in to put in some new wells, and the new wells were not meant to increase capacity. The new wells were meant to maintain the well field. And what I mean by that is, as I mentioned, you've got several wells in the north well field that are reaching near 100 years old. And at some point in time, these wells are not going to be able to produce anymore, need to, will need to be abandoned. And so these new wells were put in place proactively in preparation for that. And so they weren't added for added capacity, they were added for replacement. And so, so yeah, the city of Fond du Lac has always been in a good position as far as having enough capacity to serve their demand.
If we would get low on supply, we could always use, is it, is Lake Winnebago, is that the, like, is that our backup?
Well, that is, is, is yet to be fully determined. It is an option. Based off the fact that the city of Fond du Lac is now a distributed well supply, changing to a single point, lake water connection would require some significant changes to the distribution system with some significant cost. Adding an east side well field, for an example, would allow that just to be tied into the existing distribution system and feed, feed from that side of things while maintaining your existing infrastructure. And so it would be easier to implement an, an east side well field from a cost standpoint and an operational standpoint, but surface water is always, could always be an option.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm just wondering, do you anticipate that there would be actions that we would take, need to take in the near future, or would it be more if we see that highest projected growth going into the next 10 years?
Yeah, so, you know, so everything that we presented here was looking at demands with that highest projected growth, so you're good for, for the next 10 years and beyond. Now, if, if the population projections or the growth projections match more of the more recent DOA estimates, and it's actually less than that, you can go out even further than that. So I wouldn't see any action being needed from a supply or storage standpoint for 10, between 10 and 20 years unless something more drastically occurs from a growth standpoint or large water user standpoint.
Okay. All right, well, I'm not seeing any other questions. So it was a great discussion, though. Thank you so much for joining us and for sharing your presentation today.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to item B, which is recruitment process for community development director position, presented by our city attorney, Ms. Hoffman, and who's also the director of human resources.
Correct. Thank you, President Brol. And thank you, Arlene, for bringing the memo up. So we have begun the recruitment process regretfully for replacing our director of community development, and we have contracted with a outside firm, Innovative Public Advisors, who, which is a firm that, the two partners are people that have been public, like, directors of, and, and public employees in, in the state of Wisconsin for quite a bit of time. And, you know, we have great hope and confidence in their abilities to help us find some good new candidates. No one will replace you, Diane, but, but we will, we will endeavor to get along without you, I'm sorry. Anyway, the plan, the profile has already been created, and it's being sent out. We've got a list of all the different associations that's going to be put out on, it's, it's on the city website, and we will begin collecting applications, they will do review, they'll share them with us, we'll do interviews, and hopefully one of them will work out. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Hoffman? Ms. Leering?
So I'm glad that we are looking at an outside firm to help with this. I'm just wondering, who are the, can, can you name the city leadership and key staff that would be involved in selecting this person or doing interviews?
Currently, we're planning that all the directors will be involved in the interview process.
All of them? Okay. And then, so, just, just like with any position, like, the primary positions in the city, including even city manager, or any, you know, any of these major positions in the city, I'm just wondering if, I wish we could set, set money aside in the budget ahead of time just to plan for things like this when they occur. I think it would be good to have money set aside in the budget for, for things like this. We don't know when people are ever going to leave their positions, or, you know, something happens that they can't perform at their positions, but I also feel like, yeah, I just, I think we should have it in the budget, something like this. I do think that Diane's position is really important, and I feel like we need three people to do that job. And so is there any possibility while we are looking for a new director of community development that we could also fill the other position and then add a position? I mean, I really think it's important that we have more people in that.
Ms. Lauren, good questions. You know, part of it is the mission, and I think right now we're organized to perform that mission very well. The other thing is affordability, and I think the budget reflects the affordability. And so, you know, Ms. Benson's, in her judgment and in mine, we have enough, we've requested enough authorization from all of you to perform our missions at both community development planning, the senior center, parking enforcement, and, and building inspections, all of that is part of community development. And I feel confident that we're in a good spot. The, you know, part of that is with the quality of, of the leadership, and we've had the benefit of Ms. Benson's leadership, so that's what we're trying to replicate here with this, with this effort to recruit. I don't worry about the money because we have contingency money in human resources. This effort will cost about $9,000, that's pretty typical. You get a lot for your money in, in that regard, because you think about the contribution that someone like Ms. Benson makes over the course of 10 to 15 years, $9,000 is a drop in the bucket, and, you know, and an organization's got about $160 million budget, we've got that covered. So we're, we're in good shape. I think this is, this is good, I think community development is organized well, and I feel good about how to move forward from here.
Can I also ask how much money we keep as contingency for something like this?
Tricia, do you, do you have an idea? I mean, it's, for, for an organization like ours, $9,000 is, we, we have not really a specific amount of money that says for community development, but with HR, we have, we have an account that can cover legal, unanticipated, or perhaps more, better described, generally defined legal requirements or personnel requirements. For example, you know, we, we recruit, we recruit probably 30 to 50 positions a year, and, you know, all those come with a cost, and so this is, this is part of that. Just a greater investment that we're using an outside firm here.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Ms. Brol. Ms. Benson, congratulations, their, their gain is our loss. I'll never look at layered cake the same way ever again, so we all understand that. Ms. Hoffman, at what point do we get involved as a city council? Will there be a council representative on the panel that are interviewing, is my, my question? I'm not saying it's me, I don't, I don't want to do it.
No, I, I can answer that, Mr. Zimmerman. Typically, we do this the way we would do all of our jobs. The hiring official for a department head is, is me. The, the way Ms. Hoffman referred to this as involving all the department heads, which it will, they'll all be involved in the interviews, and then we'll go from there. So we, we wouldn't typically involve city council members in, in that process. I can, I think the most recent process was for, if I recall, it was for IT, that's the same process we followed there. We ended up with a promotion out of that. So that, that's typically how we would do it.
Thank you.
Well, and if I could just add to that, though, because I think maybe some of the confusion or just interest in, in this process is that I think certain positions do require a different process, for example, like police chief, that require the police and fire commission same as fire chief, whereas a department head is not necessarily the same process.
That's right. Those you refer to are statutory, that's, that's how it's done in every municipality.
All right, Mr. Schussler, did you have a question?
Thank you, yeah. I see on our website that there's also advertised for a principal planner and a chief building inspector. So with those positions in the same department being open, does that complicate the recruiting for a development director?
No, I think it actually is of, of benefit to a new person, because they, in, in this case, our building inspectors decided to stay on, so that, that advertisement's no longer applicable. As far as the planner, I, I think we, we have the potential to have one hired in the next two to four weeks, say? So I, I think that's a good, a, a good outcome. Gives a new person a chance to mold the team, particularly their, the planner, I, in my mind, the planner's kind of a number two person in that, in that department, so I think that, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments from council. So I just want to say, looking at the recruitment materials from the firm, it looks like, you know, a great presentation, hopefully will, will attract a lot of candidates, although I wish we didn't have to, but looking forward to seeing what's next, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, with that, that ends our input items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Heisler. This is not debatable, please proceed to vote.
I lean on the yes, we locked up over here.
And that passes unanimously, we are adjourned.